Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council from Monday, May 15, 2023. And I'd ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We are ever mindful, after the celebrations of yesterday, the value that the mother plays in the life of all countries and all nations and in our world. And in Batavia, we are especially fortunate to be blessed to have any number of great mothers who do so much beyond just raising their children, but also are key community delegators and contributors and good idea folks. And so I just wanted to acknowledge in our invocation tonight, the high value and great appreciation and admiration that we should all hold for the mothers in Batavia. Tonight also, I would like to acknowledge, we are going to see some changes in our office here, kind of a little bit off schedule, but it all comes together. And I just want to express a blessing to the newly arrived Alderman, Tim Lancy, on his work ahead of him. And I'm sure that he will do great for the community of Batavia. And I'd also like to say a word about Alderman Conley as he leaves the City Council, due to the fact that he has bought himself a new house and is moving and is not going to be in his ward anymore. So we've got several different things happening that we are very fortunate to be blessed by people who have really come into Batavia and want to serve our community in so many good ways. Tonight, as always, we ask for a special blessing on all those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just said a special blessing be showered on them. And as always, we ask for vision and understanding and appreciation by the members of the City Council as they act on the issues and actions that will be for them tonight. And finally, we want to ask for a special blessing on all those from Batavia who are currently confirmed with illness or sick or have some big problem in their life. And we just ask that a blessing be showered on each and every one of these individuals. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Who am I going to get here? Alderman Lehman, you want to lead us in such a pledge of allegiance?
A delegation to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Miller.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Conley.
Chantet.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Euer.
Here.
Serone. Thirteen of thirteen present. Sorry, twelve of twelve present.
So we have a necessary quorum to conduct business. Okay, number four is the reminder from the chair to ask anybody if you're going to address this this evening that you please use the microphone. And so it's clearly understood because this is being recorded for being replayed on TV. So we want to make sure everybody can understand everything that's being said. All right. Item number five, our items should be removed, added or changed on tonight's agenda. Alderman Chantet, do you have anything?
I do. We're going to delete item number 11. The members of the bicycle commission are not available this evening, so we're going to remove 11.
Okay.
And no other changes, I'm aware. So I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. We have a motion second for the change in the agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Twelve yes, no, no, two absent.
Motion's approved. All right, the next item is item six, which is the oath of office to be given to Tim Lancy, who is the newly elected alderman of the sixth ward and who was elected to set post in the most recent April election. Tim, if you'll come forward and meet me out here in the center of the room. You want to bring your family with you?
We need to hear him more than you.
I can hold it in the middle.
Number one, thank you for running and working so hard for this operation. So thank you again. If you would raise your right hand and repeat it to me, aye, and state your name.
Aye, Tim Lancy.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the office of fifth ward alderman.
To the office of sixth ward alderman.
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage. In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
To the office of sixth ward alderman.
To the office of sixth ward alderman.
To the best of my.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir.
Are we going to make any comments? Mike?
Uh, sure.
As an elected, you can certainly make it from your seat. As an elected, you're welcome to make those remarks from your seat.
Absolutely. No, I look forward to working with everybody. I look forward to serving the community. You know, this is, I kind of saw myself in public service at some point in my life and the opportunity presented itself. So again, look forward to working with you all. My wife and I love the community, moved here in August of 20, but have known the area much longer than that and have been visiting the area much longer than that. So looking forward to improving the town right alongside you guys. So thank you. Thank you. We're not quiet in the Lancy House.
All right, we will move to item number seven on the agenda, which is the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chantet.
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file building reports for March and April 2023, the 2023 post issuance compliance report, January, February, and March, City Council financial reports, and approvals, the Bay 12 2023 payroll in the amount of $972,247,001. I don't have the dollar amount for the accounts payable check register. Does anyone have that?
No.
I couldn't find the number. So I would say, moving on until we can find that one. Resolution 23-68-R, approval for temporary construction license with Target Corp. for the reconstruction of Randall Road sanitary lift station. Resolution 23-69-R, it's approval of a grant easement with Target Corporation for reconstruction of the Randall Road sanitary lift station. Ordinance 23-20, amending the comprehensive plan, you write that down, remember. Thank you. For the comprehensive plan land use map for property at 216 Whipple Avenue from residential to two to 3.5 dwellings per acre, which is neighborhood commercial mixed use. Thank you. Ordinance 23-21, amendment to zoning map for 834 Main Street, 216, 221, 224, and 229 Whipple Avenue. Resolution 23-65-R, authorizing execution of a contract for the 2023 crack filling program with Deller, Inc. for the amount not to exceed $213,932.50. Authorizing execution of IDOT resolution to appropriate, am I reading from the wrong one? I thought we read this wrong. Oh, this is from, I'm sorry. NFT funds for the 2023 crack filling program. Ordinance 23-17, amending a comprehensive plan land use map for property and portions of property at 103 Main Street for light industrial to public facilities and institutional. Ordinance 23-18, amendment to the zoning map for PFI, that's Public Facilities and Institutional District, and Plan Development Overlay District with amendments to Plan Development granted by ordinance 16-78. And ordinance 23-22, amending Title V of the Municipal Code relating to dogs and animals in the city of Batavia. And then going back to our accounts payable check register, that amount is for $1,380,256.6. Thank you. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as hastily and choppily read.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Moved by Chantet, second by Sulfah for the approval of the consent agenda. Is there any questions from anybody? Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Beck. Oh, Miller, Lancy, my apologies. Beck.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving to item number eight, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody in the audience wish to address the City Council for something that's not on the agenda? Okay. Moving then to item number nine, which is proclamation for National Safe Boating Week. Alderman Chantet.
Your Honor, our proclamation, for over 100 million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity from coast to coast and everywhere in between. People are taken to the water and enjoying time together boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. During National Safe Boating Week, the U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Whereas, on average, 650 people die each day or each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, 75% of these are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey DeShelky, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby support the goals of Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim the week of May 20 through 26, 2023, as National Safe Boating Week, and encourage all residents of Batavia to practice safe boating habits and to wear a life jacket at all times while boating. Signed, Jeffrey DeShelky, Mayor. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
We have a motion second for the approval of the proclamation. Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
And I'll note that we have with us from the U.S. Coast Guard, Mark Jan-Dasek.
I didn't hear what you said.
I was acknowledging who our special guest is.
Okay. Well, anyway, first of all, I'd like to present to you an official copy of the proclamation.
Thank you.
And thank you and all that your organization does and Coast Guard and everybody to keep our waters safe and navigable. And we are very, very proud and pleased to have National Safe Boating Week as part of Batavia's agenda. So if you'd like to make a few comments, we'd appreciate it.
Well, thank you for having me here this evening. National Safe Boating Week is a very big deal to the Coast Guard. We're trying to bring awareness and we appreciate it being done at the community level to safe boating. As was read earlier, there are tremendous number of deaths each year. There are a number of deaths on the river, a number of deaths on Lake Michigan. And our job as the Coast Guard Auxiliary is to try to teach people how not to die when they're boating. And basic things like wearing a life jacket, boating sober, paying attention to what they're doing, being on watch while they're boating, are very important things to saving lives while people are boating. And our mission is supporting the full-time Coast Guard in saving lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down.
Thanks for having me.
Very briefly, while we have you here, Mr. Jan-Dasek, if you could just make just one brief remark. We're a community, a river community, that has a dam. Is there anything you can say briefly to anybody who's watching tonight about how to respect and be able to play with your boats and play on the water while being near a dam? It'd just be nice to hear from somebody else.
The type of dam that we have in Batavia is particularly dangerous. You're best off staying far away from it. The river has a lot of these roller dams, and they do take a lot of lives. So anybody that's wanting to, you know, in particular, you're going to see kayakers and canoeists that could get caught up in that dam. And there's really no way out once you're in it. So the best way to prevent an accident from happening is just to give it a real wide berth, stay away from the dams.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Okay, the next one is a proclamation for National Public Works Week.
Your Honor, our proclamation, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, water, wastewater, and electric, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey DeShelky, Mayor of the City of Batavia, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week. In the City of Batavia, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize their contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life on the 15th day of May, 2023. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of the proclamation for National Public Works Week. Any comments from the council? Kirk, call the roll.
Chantet.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Euer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. All right, and we don't have anybody here from Public Works, do we?
I'd like to thank City Council for recognizing our public works services here in the City of Batavia. Two instances recently come to mind about this. March 30, when this town was hit with an EF0 tornadoic event, multiple departments came out and spent all night and most of the next day working on our utilities to get them up and running. And I just hold them in the highest regard for that. The other is, you know, May 11, having been the termination of the emergency order associated with the COVID-19 pandemic and everything that our public works departments did to support us all throughout that as essential workers and as first responders out there to help us through all of that. So I thank you very much for this award.
Thank you for receiving it. Okay, we've taken item 11 off the agenda, and we'll probably do that next meeting. And moving then to item 12 is recognition of Tom Conley as fourth ward alderman. Now, this creates kind of a unique moment here because normally after you serve a full term on the City Council, if you leave, we give you a proclamation. And so we've never had one where we haven't done a full-termed alderman. So I'm going to state publicly that I'm hoping that we won't do it tonight, but I'm hoping you will return to this body in another part of town once you relocate at some future date. And you'll have credit for about almost two years on the City Council. And so that will be something to hopefully look forward to. Tom and I have talked, and I know he has some aspirations maybe to do that at some future time. But literally, he is moving from the east side over on the northeast side to the northwest side. And so he's going to have to wait his turn there or wait till, he's building a new house over in Winding Creek. And so we're glad we kept him, but maybe we can find something else for him to do in the days ahead, too. So I just want to, as he's here, thank you for all you've done. You've been a very thought-provoking and serious alderman. You've always attended all the meetings, and you've been an ideal example of what a good alderman should be. So I just thank you for what you've learned already, and hopefully in the future, we'll put you into government someplace. He may want to run for something else beyond the City Council, so we'll just keep our eye on him. And he is a great, good guy for public service. And we are very, very fortunate to have had him with us for the period he did. But let me just say, it was his decision. He had an opportunity to take his family to a bigger, nicer house. And so that decision was made, and he had to move to the other side of town. So we hope you are back. And as you well know, the situations do provide that, you know, there's an aldermanic seat up in every ward every two years. So maybe if one opens up in your new board, the day will come when you can run. So thank you again, Tom, for all you've done to, you know, make Batavia a better place and for your thought-provoking votes. And I appreciate good efforts. And I hopefully, as you've told me, you've learned a lot just sitting here and participating. And so you know what's going on. Would you like to make some comments?
I appreciate the recognition. This was certainly a bittersweet decision. As excited as I am for my family that we're going to be able to stay here in Batavia and move into a house that is going to be better for our growing size and needs. I'm disappointed, obviously, that I have to leave council, especially so new into the term. It's been an absolute privilege serving with you guys for the 19 months since I've been appointed. And I appreciate the trust you put in me when you did appoint me. And I hope I reciprocated that by providing meaningful perspective to our discussions and decisions. And finally, just want to thank you guys for all the great work you do and for staff. It really shouldn't go unnoticed what City Council and staff does to make Batavia such a great place to live. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item 13 is the reappointment of Randy Zeiss to the Batavia Board of Fire and Police Commissioners for a three-year term. As you all know, we have three members that serve on that that are the final say in making, after they interview and review and study all the candidates that want to serve either on the police or fire department. It is this body, it's kind of our civil service board, if you will. And they're the ones that make the decision as to who gets picked. And so they take the politics out of it. And the three people we have, in the case of Randy Zeiss, he's a retired member of And we have a woman who ran a lot of the medical treatment in this region for a long time. And so we got an extremely good fire and police commission, and I'm very, very pleased that they're all willing to serve. But Randy indicated to me he would be willing to take another three-year term, and I'm glad he did because right now we've got a lot of movement in there. We're hiring new people and several retirements are coming at us. So there's a lot of things for this group to do. And we've got people who understand both departments very well. So I would ask for your confirmation of my reappointment of Randy Zeiss to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. Would somebody so make that motion?
So moved.
Second, moved by Alderman Chansett, second by Alderman Sulfah. Any comments? Court call the roll.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Reappointment is confirmed by a vote of thirteen yes, no, no, and one absent. So thank you for that. Moving then to item 14 is the Batavia Main Street report from this meeting. As you know, we switch off between Main Street and the chamber, and tonight's best turn to talk here.
Hi, thanks for having me tonight. Couple just things. New Moon Vegans ribbon cutting got moved to June 2nd. So it's 10:00 a.m., so if you can check it out. They are located at 119 South Wilson Street. The farmer's market opens this Saturday, the 20th, along with the Artisan Collective. So we'll have 43 farmer's market vendors and 50 artisan vendors. So we're really excited about that. Last weekend was the opening of the Boardwalk Shops, which I'm going to introduce you to a couple of the tenants in a second, but we had a good weekend. Cocktails in the Park, which is July 22nd, and Dinner Table, which is August 13th. Tickets go on sale June 1st. Cocktails tickets will be $40 in advance, and Dinner Table is $65. You can get those tickets at downtownbatavia.com. And now I'm going to introduce a couple of our Boardwalk Shop tenants. Do you guys want me to just come up? So they can introduce themselves. First, we have Rich. This is Rich with Fox Valley Gallery of Wood, and he's going to introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Rich Hall Repin. I'm with the Fox Valley Gallery of Wood. This is our third year at the Batavia Boardwalk Shops, and we're really excited. We're four semi-retired woodturners, and we can't figure out what to do after that. So you guys all have something to look forward to since you're all much younger than we are. So come down. And we moved from watching the garbage cans and the porta-potties to now we're watching the walnut tree. And we can't wait for it to take on a new life as brilliant salad bowls. So, thanks.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cynthia DeValovich, and I'm the owner of the Blue Owl Market. I specialize in refinishing furniture and home decor. I have been in business since 2018. I am a vendor at the Rustic Fax in North Aurora. I have been there since 2020. And this year I was given the opportunity to be here, which is very exciting. I just want to thank everyone who has been involved in the project and those who continue to support it. Just want you to know that you are changing people's lives. And just thank you for welcoming here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy Simmons. I was in the Boardwalk Shops last season, and then I partnered with another girl who was in the Boardwalk Shops, and we became Thrown Threads. I cannot speak highly enough of this program for what it does, what it teaches, the revenue it brings in, what we learn. I find it, I love being there, and everyone's done such a good job with the Boardwalk Shops, how it's run. We love being there. So thank you very much.
Gather the Bakery wasn't able to come tonight, but they sent a little message. They said, "Thank you so much for letting us be part of the Boardwalk Shops. It's such an exciting opportunity for our little bakery. We are so thankful for the support from everyone. We're so sorry we're unable to meet in person and hope to introduce us to you all soon. Thank you for helping us grow our small business." From Deanna and Eric there, Gather the Bakery, they do sweets and savouries. So thank you so much from all of them. And just because Bob Hanson is here, Bob is finishing up his third term on the shops. He has served as president for the last two years. So I just want to acknowledge and thank him so much for everything he's done for our program. He really leads the charge on so many things. So thank you, Bob. And do you have any questions for me?
Is all, everybody in the Boardwalk Shops for this year? I mean, everybody's taking place, so they're all there now?
Yes, everybody opened on Saturday, I mean, on Friday, the 12th. We did change it up a little bit. We decided to have a pop-up opportunity this year, so we have nine permanent tenants, and then we have one pop-up shop that's filled with artists and artisans who worked with us in the Artisan Collective and the farmer's market, and that's full for the season as well.
Well, I would just tell you, you are envy of curiosity among other cities. And I told the council previously, I've had several mayors in here called me and said, "Could I come down and you take me through," or whatever. So, and I'm led to believe that we've got more to come. So they're showing up and, you know, there's some commonalities. Obviously, you're always there, and Bob Hanson is always, seems to be there every Saturday morning, too. So he's doing his more than fair share of volunteerism in that. And it's good to be able to point out to these visiting mayors. I had the mayor of Algonquin down here recently, and she was quite impressed in, you know, that I knew most of the people that were there. Well, I should, but that we had these folks tonight. She said, "Are you paying any of these folks?" I said, "No, not really. This is them." And I said, "This whole thing was built by volunteers, including a couple members of our city council." Alderman Malley was one of them that was very active in helping to put those buildings together and with the Batavia High School class. So I said, "This thing has just been a great illustration of community involvement and, you know, various groups and organizations coming together." And your leadership has certainly helped, I think, fine-tuned it and made it into something that hopefully will be part of the Batavia scene for many, many decades to come.
We hope so.
Beth, sorry to put you on the spot, but can you share how many of the Boardwalk Shops have, I'll say, graduated to being in brick-and-mortar stores?
Right now, we have 13 that are currently functioning. So in the first three years, we were able to have 13 of those businesses go into brick-and-mortar locations. In the first three years, brought in over a million dollars in sales.
That's all great stuff.
All right.
Anybody in the council have any questions for Beth? Alderman Lehman?
Are the hours different this year?
Yes, they are. We decided, there was some confusion. We had different hours, like, for each day last year. So this year, we are Friday and Saturday, nine to five, and then Sunday is 11 to four. It's going to be a good weekend, so go visit. Thank you.
All right, the administrators' report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Water Street Studios is going to be here at our next committee of the whole meeting on May 23rd, and they will be talking about a proposal to allow them to place a mural on the public parking deck that's on North River Street. So look forward to hearing about their ideas for that. We've completed interviews for the vacant administrative assistant position in the Community and Economic Development Department, so we hope to have that position filled soon. The Plan Commission will meet this Wednesday with two items on their agenda. One will be the Grainology Brew Stillery on Flynn Street for a conditional use for their craft brewery and distillery operation. And the other item is the Phase 2 plat for the Winding Creek development, and that is the second and final phase of that project. And the Police Department, they have received shipment of tactical trauma kits that mount to the vehicle headrest inside each squad car. This goes beyond your regular first aid items. They contain emergency medical equipment that will be used by officers dealing with victims of traumatic injuries and penetrating wounds. Two of our officers have received specialized training on how to use these kits, and those two officers will then be training the rest of the members of the department on how to use those, so that we will have those in-depth skill set when saving lives, where every second is critical. The Batavia Police Department will be participating in the Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run, Cop on a Rooftop fundraising event again this year. It will be this coming Friday, May 19th, at both Dunkin' Donuts locations in Batavia, both on Randall Road and on Route 31. So please consider coming out between the hours of 5:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m. to show your support to Special Olympics and the Law Enforcement Torch Run. It's our biggest fundraiser to support Special Olympics, and it's one of the, it's just an amazing organization that we are so happy to support. And then also, our Police Department plans to be out at the farmer's market on May 20th. They're combining the coffee with a cup that started a month ago, and we're going to have a cup of mocha coffee with our officers, an opportunity to ask questions about anything. We also hope that maybe some people there will pick up a brochure and an application and consider becoming a Batavia police officer. And certainly, if you know anyone who has the characteristics of compassion, patience, and a desire to help others, please send them our way. And Public Works Engineering was notified that all paperwork is now in place for the Wilson Prairie Project to proceed to IDOT's June bid letting. While we anticipate some underground utility construction commencing this fall, a majority of the construction will not commence until next spring, and we expect that to be ongoing throughout the 2024 construction season. We have completed the fiber connection that we were constructing for the Park District at their quarry facility. And in finance, new software for finance and for human resources went live on Friday, the 5th, and seems to be working out good for us. So a very welcome upgrade. That's all that I have unless anybody has any questions for me. Yes, Alderman Beck?
A few in follow-ups to the resident email that we got about Batavia Avenue between Main Street and Route, Main Street and First Street. Trash and recycling, there's a trashcan there now, but not a recycling bin. Is that possible to add, or is that part of our contract with?
It would be able to be added.
That would be wonderful. There was a question from some of the businesses there, too, about planters. I know we have those big bowl ones. I don't know if those are the appropriate size and scale for that block, but do we have any other planter models that might beautify that block a little bit? And then, sorry, they gave me a list. Then, in the back lot, there is this area, you know, there's like a block of parking, and then there's a landscape island, and then there's a through way, a two-way, that people love to park in, and then it blocks access when the parking lot is full, then people can't get around. Is there any way in that parking island that we could get a no parking sign facing the road? That should be an obvious lane, but people like to park in it. And then also, I know that with New Moon Vegan opening up June 2nd, or having the ribbon cutting anyway, they were inquiring about some bistro tables out in the front, and were wondering the status of being able to get whatever permission they need to add the little bistro tables out.
I will have Anthony Assam reach out to them and explain to them that this is for the outdoor.
That would, yeah, that would require an outdoor cafe license. If it's in the front, if it's in the back, it's a little different, but it would be a cafe license, like mostly other places to have that on a sidewalk.
And what's the turnaround time to get something like that?
If they submit a complete application, usually it's maybe a week, week and a half.
Okay. Okay, my last thing, and this isn't necessarily specific to that block, but downtown in general, and then actually it was coming up. It sparked my curiosity when we were approving the plans, the trotter plans for the wastewater treatment plant, but, and this could maybe be a future discussion if there's another alderperson that would like to join me, in reviewing some of the plantings and the plants that we choose for both our public streets and planters, but then also for our public properties as well as part of the Climate Action Plan, incorporating native plants into your landscaping or just having a policy about a certain percentage that could be native versus ornamental would be a fun discussion to have if anybody was willing to go in on that with me.
I would, I would support a discussion on that. That'd be cool. Very good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other business from the council? Anybody else have anything you want to bring up? Alderman Lehman?
I may have missed it when I walked in tonight, but just curious when we might get the Batavia community flag up on our city poll.
I believe we only have two city polls, so would we take down the State of Illinois flag and put it up? And then the other thing is, I think that June is when we ordinarily fly the unity flag. So maybe put it up there for a couple of weeks and then trade it out for the unity flag?
I don't know. I didn't know when we were given the flag from the Chamber of Commerce, I believe, right?
Right.
Just curious when it might show up, even on maybe a different flag pole in town or, you know, on the building, maybe?
That's the thing. We only have the two flag poles here, so I'm open to suggestions.
Dropping the State of Illinois flag would be fine.
I'll join, anybody else that wants to join me, I'll say we take the Illinois flag down and put the Batavia flag up.
The schools.
I think you can do that if you want.
Can you have two flags on one pole?
Yeah, you said one beneath the other.
If you only want two flags on one pole, I think is the rule, or tries to be the standard, isn't it?
I don't know.
I think so.
About standards of flying flags, but it should be investigated because I have learned that when you do it wrong, people will definitely hold you accountable for that.
As long as, as long as the U.S. flag is the highest, is the highest flying when you're flying, you can put it beneath the Illinois one. But again, as long as it's not above the U.S. flag.
Okay, cool.
As you say, as one of the resident Eagle Scouts in the room, the proper way is absolutely yes. The U.S. flag goes first, no more than two per pole. I would propose that we have the U.S. flag followed by the state flag on one pole, and we have, what's on the other one? Is the?
Unity flag?
We can have.
Or the community flag?
There are a total of two on that one. I thought there was one other flag on that pole.
We've only got two flags, I think.
Oh, two flag. It would be appropriate to move the State of Illinois underneath the U.S. flag and keep that pole always. We could fly the Batavia flag on the secondary pole as long as it's lower than the country and the state and have a fourth spot for a rotating flag. That seems the most equitable way to do it.
If that flag is lower than the other two, will it look like it's being flown at half mast? Okay.
No, it just has to be just a little bit below it in order to respect the distance on it. And we certainly talked about it in committee, but as long as we do it like that and do not fly them upside down, that will be according to protocol.
Okay.
And that's how I earn my Eagle Scout.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just want to take a moment and tell a couple of true stories that just happened in our town involving our city government. The first one was the Batavia High School prom, which was now, be two weeks from this coming Saturday. We had some folks that wanted to, there's this thing that goes on at Batavia High School on prom night where everybody gets dressed up in their tuxes and their gowns, and then many of them in the past have come down and stood by the depot pond and had their picture taken as a group and individually. And so I get a call about five days before the prom from five ladies on a speakerphone, and I later determined that they were all grandmothers of kids that were going to go to the prom. And they wanted to know if the Batavia Fire Department could come down to the prom, or to the Depot Museum prior to the prom, and set up the hose wagon and pump some water out of the depot pond and then shoot it up in the air so the kids could have this water feature as the background of their picture. So I didn't know what to say, so I get ahold of our chief, and Chief Hanson said, "Good publications. We'd be happy to do it. If the kids want to have this water feature we've been asked to do and see what their reaction was. Well, I called the administration, and they were dismayed by it, I guess I would describe it, because they had, Batavia High School this year had moved the prom out of Batavia High School and taken it up to the Q Center in St. Charles, where this, they have a big area, I'm sure some of you have been in there, it's a big, I don't know, ballroom or restaurant or whatever you want to call it on whatever night you're doing it. And then they have this beautiful walking area outside with a water fountain and falls and all of the other stuff. So they thought they were really doing something, and then they thought by encouraging these kids to come downtown, it would dissuade them from all the beauty of this place where they were going to do it. So I thought, well, we better not do this this year. So, so in the meantime, these, I think these grandmothers got excited with me because then they were concerned that when you went to the Q Center, you got through a guard at a gate, and if he didn't know who you were, he wasn't going to let you in to take pictures of your granddaughter or whatever have you. So then I called the school back, and they said they thought they could make arrangements so that that wouldn't happen, and I guess it didn't. So at the end of the day, the chief and his men stood down, we didn't bring the fire truck down, but we made the, you know, we were prepared to do it if everybody agreed. So then the second thing that happens at the prom, and this is where Chief Mazza comes in, we have a big party down at Funway under Bob Hanson's leadership down there, which I got asked one time to come down, because all of you who've been here a while know that every year, all the money from liquor fines that we collect throughout the year, we put it into a pot, and we then give it to the Batavia High School Prom Committee to host this party down at Funway, which then keeps everybody off the street and away from anything else they may want to get themselves into. And the catalyst to the whole thing is, is that about 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning, they have a drawing, and they have all these nice prizes that they've used, the city fined money to buy, small computers and phones and everything else you can imagine. So most people, once they come, if you leave the prom party, you can't come back in, and you only can be there, you have to be there when your name's drawn. So they really got you kind of locked in down there. So they wanted me to come down one year, so I went down, and then they wanted me to draw all the numbers out of the pot at 3:30 in the morning, and it was a long night, let me just tell you that. So I've, I've been asked to come back since, and I say, well, I'm getting to be pretty old to be drawing numbers on the Bob Hanson's floor down there at 3:30 in the morning, so I beg off on it. But anyway, we again did that this year. The prom committee took everybody out of the Q Center, and they moved them all down to, so subsequent to that, I now have had two calls from parents from other towns wanting to know, how does Batavia get such a sweet deal where this great place to have this prom, post-prom party, and why their town doesn't have anything like it, and the kids go out and get in all kinds of trouble and whatever? And so I said, here's the number, ask for Bob Hanson, maybe he'll let you come down and do your, do your party there. And he doesn't care, I don't think, what school does it, as long as they're acting okay and pay their fees. So anyway, Bob, I don't know if you're getting any business from me or not, but I've.
Well, can I make a couple corrections?
Yeah?
About 10 years ago, we stopped going until 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. We're going to go to 2:00 now, so you're lucky to come back.
I was down there at 3:30, I remember. 2:00, okay, well.
The volunteers are really hard to get that late.
Okay, all right.
So a great committee again this year. I'm glad to talk to you today.
By just where I'm going with this story is, is that I came down here at 4:30 in Saturday afternoon to see if we had any prom goers, and there were a couple that were standing down here with grandma, and they were taking pictures of themselves by the pond. And then when I saw, we had a couple of our police officers who I know were, I guess, going to the prom first, and then they went down to your place and hung around, and I was just gonna, you know, that was like 4:00 in the afternoon, and even if they stayed down to your place till 2:00, that's, you know, 10 hours they're down here on duty chasing. So I just wanted to commend the Batavia Police Department and the group that Chief Mazza put together. They really stayed with these kids, and, you know, they were like part of the party from everything I could see, and it was great relationships between the kids and the police and the kids in Funway and whatever. So you're sitting here tonight, and I just wanted to publicly commend you and thank you and your staff for what you did, do to make this such a special night, because now I got other mayors calling me up wanting to know what Batavia's doing and how we're doing it. It's like the boardwalk shops. So I just was very pleased with the turnout, and the Batavia Police really roasted the occasion. And I think, chief, we did not have any calls of any, of any nature on prom night, and sometimes it's been a wild and willy moving target. But this year, it was all peaceful and calm, and everybody went and did all the nice stuff, and everybody apparently had a good time. So my second part of this story is, is that a week ago tomorrow night, they had the Batavia Brotherhood banquet. Now, that's a banquet that's historically been held every year since, what did we say? 1954, or '64, I think. And they get, men from all the churches get together at a different church, and they have a meal served, and then they have a little religious context to their program, and then they do a prayer for themselves and the community, and then everybody goes home. But they've been doing it for all these years, and one year during the COVID, they did not do it, but they're back. And this year, the idea was to kind of really bring it back to its original grandeur, and they had it out at the Emmanuel Lutheran Church on Hart Road. And so the program ended up being that they asked Sheriff Hane if he would come and talk about some of the programs he's got going on in the Kane County Jail about getting people to go on the straight and narrow after they've gotten themselves in trouble. So the sheriff came down, and he did a nice job, in my opinion. But one of the things I did, because it was that, and then the prom committee had asked, after Sheriff Hane got done, would I be willing to speak for a minute about the Batavia relationship with the chaplain program that we now have in both the police and fire departments? And so I said I would. And I figured out, and I guess they had already figured this out, this year was the 75th year that the City of Batavia's had a chaplains program, starting in the fire department and then later extended to the police department. And again, it appears, I've gotten other mayors asking me about this, there aren't many towns that do this. But this chaplain, and right now, it's Chaplain Resici from Calvary Church, he's been with us now, what, 10 years? I don't know, he's been there quite a while. The fire department has, out in the East Side Station, they've got pictures of each chaplain, and Reverend Johnstone, who was over at the First Baptist Church and had been a combat chaplain in World War II in the Pacific, got asked to be the first one to do it. And he stayed on that job from 1948 till 1974, when he died. So he was there for a full third of the time that we've had the chaplains program. We had one guy. Now they've passed it around, and since then, we've had nine different chaplains in the last few years. But like Father Resici, he really likes doing it, so he keeps doing it. But this program really has had phenomenal success in helping our police and firemen at very trying moments, everything from the police being told they got to go to some house and make a death notification because some resident just has been killed in an accident, to fire department gets involved with children who have been badly burned by something, and so they, they're kind of keeping the parents under control and comforted and whatever. So this year, we had this out there, and we're sitting there having this program by Sheriff Hane, and as you all know, I have an interest in the fire department, so I have a monitor on me, and all of a sudden, I feel the thing vibrating on my hip, and I look at it, and it says there's a fire going on out on Beef Road in Elburn. And it all, it went very quickly to a big fire. And at the end of the day, I think they ended up with like 21 fire departments out there at this fire in Elburn, and it was a very costly fire, it was a big garage with a bunch of antique cars in it, and got into the house that was next to it, and they needed water, and so there was a lot of tanker involvement. And they had departments from most of DeKalb County, they had the western end of DuPage County, and I think they called everybody in Kane County. I mean, it was a big response. So this thing is just starting to heat up, and I had invited, because of this thing I was going to do about the chaplains, I had asked Chief Mazza and our fire chief if they would both come, and Chief Hanson came, and they were both sitting there with me, and all of a sudden, Chief Hanson says to me, got to say goodbye, and I knew where he was going, because I looked at. So I talked to him later this afternoon about this, and he was out at this thing in Elburn for six hours, up and through the middle of the night, fooling around with this thing, and as were many others. But I, I got up and told the story about the Batavia Chaplain Program and how it's been so successful, and it speaks to the heart, and it really is, you know, you got, when they're there, something really has gone down in a bad way, and somebody's died or been badly hurt, or there's been a bad family issue in some form or fashion. So I just wanted tonight, because we've had these two experiences now with the police and the fire department, we really are very fortunate to have the people we have running them and the organizations that we have underneath them, and we have a lot to be, I'll say one thing, we have a lot to be proud of in both the Batavia Police and the Batavia Fire Departments, because they really have risen to the occasion and continue to do so, and we got this chaplains group right there to come in and help us out, and we're very fortunate as a town to have this. So I just like to end my report on a positive nature, and I can't think of anything more positive. When I, I told this to the dinner the other night, everybody applauded, and, you know, later afterwards told me, that was good that you brought that up, that really speaks about what we're all about here, churches working together and our worship of God and whatever. So there was a lot of very positive comment and sense about what we were doing with this whole thing. So I just thought we did some good stuff the last couple of weeks, and I just wanted to share with you what we had done, and it's, as you heard, it's kind of, has a little twists and turns, and sometimes goes in a little bit different directions than you thought, but at the end of the day, we really did two nice events here that really, I think, made us look very good. So that's the end of my report. Alderman Chanza, do you want to make a motion?
Just real briefly, there might be some reporters at home watching that are curious if you've set a deadline for people to submit their resumes for interest in a vacated seat. There might be some reporters at home watching, curious if you've set a deadline, 5:00 Friday, for people to submit your resumes for the seat that just opened up.
Did, I don't, who said that?
There are people curious watching on television, because you normally name a date.
I don't remember having any, you and I didn't talk about.
We haven't posted anything yet, so they can just watch social media and our website, and we will post the, where, how to apply if one is interested and what the deadline to apply is, but I'm sure we'll open it up for a couple of weeks.
I realize the body isn't cold, but people were curious.
Well, I mean, you know, there are certain rules that you all are very much aware of, not rules, but standards we've set.
Yeah.
And if you're an alderman, you got to live within that ward that's the vacancies in. And secondly, the, we, as mayor, if I wanted to, I guess I could just pick somebody and bring them in here and say, this is who it's going to be. But as you know, I don't do that this way, and we invite anybody in the ward that's eligible to apply, and then once they apply, we set a night probably at one of our committee meetings, and whoever number it is, they'll all come out and they'll sit there in front of you and tell about themselves, and you ask them questions. And once we get that done, we'll go in the back room for a couple of minutes, and you have a vote, and you'll pick which one you want, and you make the selection as to who the new fourth ward alderman's going to be. That's how Tom got in the first time. So that's the rules. I didn't know anything about any deadline.
You typically set a deadline for people to submit that they're interested, people wouldn't throw their hats in the ring, that's all.
Yeah, I didn't set any date, though, I don't think.
Right, that's what the question was, did you set a date?
I did?
No, that was the question, did you set a date?
Oh, did I say?
The answer to the question, he has not, he has not set a date yet.
We're finally, fine-tuned watched in this place. You aren't going to pull off too much, but no, there isn't, we haven't set the date till, I guess, we've now probably, next meeting, we'll set the meeting when we're going to have the interview.
If you can picture in the olden days where they only had about eight inches of copy, the fact that we had a new person join tonight and a person leaving us means that someone yelled stop the presses because they had, they needed some more inches to write their story tonight.
Right, probably. Okay. That's a one newspaper man doing another on that one, okay. You want to make a motion, do adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Motion and second for adjournment, Kirk call the roll? Or just do a roll card?
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.